All right, good morning all. Great to see you. Hopefully everyone has a sheet. Let's begin with the word of prayer this morning. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you so much for this day that you've given to us. Thank you so much for the joy of being in your house to worship you with one another and just pray that you would continue to grow and strengthen us as followers of Jesus. Lord, as we continue this series of serving and God's mission, Lord, this Bible study, help us to continue to see where you are leading and guiding us as a congregation as we begin to lay the foundations of some strategic planning we're going to do. May your word guide us, may your spirit guide us to see, Lord, how you have made and shaped us as a congregation here at St. Peter Lutheran in Deschler. So bless us now as we study, as we look at your words, we have some discussion with one another. May it be fruitful, encouraging, and edifying to us. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. All right. Again, today is session number five. If you want to turn to your sheet. Psalm 24 verses 1 and 2 says, "The earth is the Lord's and the fullness thereof, the world and those who dwell therein; for he has founded it upon the seas and established it upon the rivers." Psalm 24 reminds us that God has and controls unlimited resources. Everything that has ever been created belongs to the Lord. Psalm 50 reinforces this. "For every beast of the forest is mine, the cattle on a thousand hills; I know all the birds of the hills, and all that moves in the field is mine. If I were hungry, I would not tell you, for the world and its fullness are mine." God has unlimited resources, but every congregation has limited resources. The Lord could provide an abundance of every kind of resource on every one of his congregations, but he chooses not to do this. Instead, he gives different gifts to different congregations according to his will. The parable of the talents found in Matthew 25 is a familiar parable to many of us. However, we tend to focus on how the parable ends and often overlook an important aspect in how it begins. The parable starts with the owner of the property entrusting his money to different servants in different amounts, each according to his ability. Matthew 25 verses 14 and 15. "For it will be like a man going on a journey, who called his servants and entrusted them, entrusted to them his property. To one he gave five talents, to another two, to another one, to each according to his ability; then he went away." Each congregation has been entrusted with God's property, each according to its ability. How does the Lord know the ability of each congregation? Like a potter who shapes the clay, see Romans 9:20 and 21, he is the one who has shaped and fashioned each congregation according to his purpose for it. By God's design, every congregation has been provided with a set amount of resources. Some congregations are one talent congregations, some are two talent congregations, and others are five talent congregations. Because resources are not unlimited, every congregation faces limitations of time, money, people, etc. Without a clear purpose and focus, there is bound to be conflict in the congregation over how these limited resources should be used. Strategic planning provides a means to minimize that conflict. All right, so you have your questions. On the backside, again, these questions were emailed to you on Friday. Hopefully you saw it. Doug, did you see the email this week?
No, I didn't.
You did not? All right. Good enough.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
It's harvest time.
Just check. We don't have one of those fancy dancy phones that you get your email to?
I don't ever look at them.
Okay. All right, so questions, all right, we'll start with 5A. At your small groups, why does everything in all of creation belong to the Lord? And what does everything include? When you get to everything, again, start thinking about specific things that are included in everything, and then we'll move on to the next question in just a few moments. So, at your small group table, begin discussing 5A. Go.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory, you know, the universe, the air, legitimately everything. It has a purpose and meaning even though we don't understand it.
Everything includes not only...
But we don't need some of the things.
No.
These things aren't necessarily off the list, but I am all of it. It all adds up to air, but we agree. And also shows his greatness in that he is God's proof that he exists.
He loves creation.
Okay, if you're done with A, you can move on to B.
I think the reason why we're limited on everything we have around us for resources is because if we're given everything we have, what's a purpose and why do we rely on it? We don't want to. I mean, I like to live video games, so I'm able to cheat the game and have everything I want. It's boring, it has no purpose. Or you have all the money in the world, so what's the point of worrying about money?
Probably because I sense of accomplishment, you know, the body, like you said, is a whole have to work for something.
You have mental or it's hard, it has value, there's a work ethic.
All right, if you're done with B, you can go on to C. Okay, if you're still discussing C, that's fine. If you want to, if you're done with C, you can go on to D. Again, this D may be, may be a little bit more difficult for you to think about, but again, think of the abilities, the gifts, the talents that we see here in our congregation. Which ones may be bigger, you know, on the five talent? One might be two, might be one, okay? And what things, in what ways are we kind of varying? Again, to each according to his ability, Jesus says in the parable, okay? So in what ways are we a one talent congregation? In what things are we a two talent? In what ways are we a five talent? Go.
I think that one of the talents we have is kind of is a struggle at the same time as unity, you know? Bringing people together, we struggle bringing people together, but we have a good connection of people and community of schools. We're a religious town and, you know, we're very strong-minded and have a good moral value of what's wrong and right. So I think that plays a big part in how we want the best for our kids, friends, family, and that's why people may not buy opinions of us or whatever cases, and it's just...
Excel in something that you have.
Maybe, maybe a five or a two. That's definitely two's problem, I'd say. Unity for sure.
I can't hear, I'm sorry. I think I'm hearing way too much over here.
I would say, yeah, using E and like having a good community and having like the support of the schools and just like religious good moral values, maybe two or four for sure. Small talent, small churches.
Sure, sure, okay. So maybe we're having a little difficulty with letter D. Let me just clarify, see, a few more minutes. So again, in the, in the parable, all right? In the parable, again, the biggest amount that Jesus gave was the five talents, okay? The next level was two, and the next level was one. Again, it doesn't mean that the one with one was a worse person than the five. Again, it says according to their abilities. So the one with one talent, like, that was according to his ability. So where do you see, or do you perceive that maybe we have a lot of abilities in our congregation that would reach the five talent level? Like, hey, we are really rich, spiritually rich, in this area in our congregation. Maybe not as much, and you see the two, or maybe, yeah, there's some in our congregation, but really don't have or perceive a lot of it with the one talent congregation. Does that maybe clarify a little bit? Okay. What was that clarification, if you want to take a couple more minutes and discuss? Go.
Strong moral values, what's wrong with that? Everyone here gets along with each other, we're able to be open-minded, talk, so we can have each other's people, like, not make that so accepted.
So that our five would be expressions? Bust something out?
Shouldn't that be like the schools, like the women in the church, volunteers and stuff like that, any type? And being rich with, you were saying, spiritual being rich instead of all money rich?
Did you know one talent also is like, maybe a problem, but like we're focused on like helping outside of our community, but we're not focused on like, why are congregations...
All right, about one more minute? You can, take one more minute, you're, you're happy. Take it up with Jesus. He didn't mention a three and a four. He mentioned five, two, and one.
Five is top?
Five is high.
Yeah, five is top tier.
Jesus didn't mention three and four. He said five, two, and one.
It's like big brain stuff right now.
We're really good at one though. I'm not very good at five.
Where do you see a lot of wealth in our congregation with the five of different talents and gifts, or things that are going on? Where do you see not as much in a two? Where do you see maybe a little bit, but not a lot with one?
But you mean that are actually being done or have the potential to be done?
That are being done. It's been given to our congregation, all right?
The other thing I was gonna say too is, if we don't have many people showing up at church, how many people are watching our lives?
If you go, if you go on to the rest of the story, obviously the one who had one did not do well with it. Just saying. All right, let's, let's bring it in while we'll kind of discuss in a large group, all right? So, all right, let's, let's run through the questions here. All right, first off, 5A, why does everything in all creation belong to the Lord?
Cause he created it.
Cause he created it, and it's not a trick question, all right? Why does everything belong to him? Because he made it. He created it. It's his. So what does everything include? Like, don't give me a generic, come on, let's... There's always gotta be one in the group, all right?
It's easier to say what's not included.
Okay, why don't we mention a few specific things that maybe came to our mind?
The world.
The world, okay? What?
People.
Animals, land...
Money.
Money.
Our time.
Our time, the air we breathe, your car, okay? I mean, just...
Energy.
Energy, yeah, energy, all right? That's a great one, okay? I mean, yeah, we can go down the list. I mean, we think of Luther in the first article, you know, he gave me clothing and shoes, house and home, land, animals, everything I need to support this body and life, okay? All right, let's go to B. For what purpose does God limit the resources available to a congregation?
For us to rely on him.
For us to rely on him.
Maybe we can see our weaknesses and work with other congregations and work together to improve both the other than us.
Okay. So see our weaknesses and be able to partner with others, other congregations.
So he gets so humbling.
Okay?
Cause we realize, you know, five loaves and two fish, we didn't do anything, God did.
Yeah. Anybody else? These are good ones, yeah. All right, how about letter C, as we kind of apply now more to our congregation here at St. Peter? What resource limitations does our congregation face? And let me emphasize and add to that currently, okay?
Financial.
Financial, okay?
Members willing to serve.
Members willing...
Numbers.
Numbers.
Members, some members willing to serve.
Number of members willing to serve.
Do you have the competition of time?
Competition of time?
Right, yeah. I mean, our time is always...
Okay, so yeah, there's multiple things going on at one time. Yeah, and, and again, for many people, time is a more important commodity or resource than money. They'll write a check, but don't ask them to serve for an hour. For, I'm not saying everybody, but is, it seems to be growing, that time is more valuable than money to people. Okay, and yeah, competition of time, there's no sacred day, there's no sacred night anymore. We got practices on Wednesdays, we got games on Sunday mornings, tournaments going all weekend, parents come home, 10 o'clock from us, all-day Saturday volleyball tournament, and they're exhausted and not gonna come to church.
I'd expand on that and just say commitment.
Commitment?
I mean, it's kind of similar to time, but...
Sure.
A different twist.
Priorities.
Okay, yeah, priorities, commitment, okay? What might be some other resource limitations our congregation faces here at St. Peter Lutheran? I, I think one thing, and I mean, whether it's, I mean, obviously the school has gotten a little, little better with that, but as a congregation here, just space, storage, it's kind of a limitation for us here at our congregation. There's not a lot of room around here. I was kind of thinking that yesterday when we had the wedding, you know, it was like, yeah, we're kind of, not a lot of room to maneuver if we're trying to, obviously we've had some, some opportunities to minister through things like Care Warriors and other things. Finding place to store things so that we have them available to help people in time of need, it's pretty limited. Obviously, the school at the house, huge blessing, Mr. Todd knows, a lot of storage, a lot more storage now at the house for the school. As I saw the stage, back in the gym now, so, yeah. Absolutely, but, but here in our, our building, for sure, just not, not a lot of storage. Obviously, other congregations were a little limited, a fellowship hall, you know, that's a big one for a lot of other congregations. Obviously, you go, you know, you go out to visit Freed and Saw or Davenport, you know, they kind of have a fellowship hall, Bible study, fellowship time, we're just limited by that. And again, getting people from there to back here, challenge, okay? It can be, okay? It's just like, oh, I can sneak out the door, where if, you know, we have a fellowship hall and you're going to get treats, maybe it's a little more pressure to stay for Bible class, you know? So, yeah.
We can get it full.
Okay, so yeah, that, that would be something, at least from my, from my standpoint, I see our space, we just have things kind of sitting all over the place, and don't go into the furnace room or you will take your life in your hands, okay? I'm just saying, that's part of the issue of space right now, like, you might break your neck. I'm not trying to be mean, I'm just, that's the reality because of limited space. Maybe we need to just get rid of something, I don't know. Anyway, all right, let's go on to letter D, maybe, again, we were, we were wrestling with this, or not sure, clear on this. In what things are we a one talent congregation, two talent congregation, five talent congregation? So we'll start with one, which was the lowest, all right? In what ways are we maybe a, you know, we just have a small resource, small gift, small talents that we perceive within our congregation here?
I think we have a small amount of the personality type people that like to take charge, like, that are willing to be in charge of BBS, willing to be Sunday School students. We have a limited amount of those types of personalities.
Okay?
I know what you're talking about!
No, 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 we're not doing that.
But I will piggyback and say, we don't, we don't have like a ton of like stay-at-home minds anymore.
Sure.
Like, there's a lot of working women.
Sure.
So I, like, there is no shame to not being able to do certain roles too.
Sure. Other ways that we are a one talent congregation, do you think?
PTSD.
Yeah, Derek?
This can kind of be a positive and a negative at the same time.
Okay.
We have a good moral faith value and strong minded.
Sure.
And sometimes we're open-minded and not open-minded, but I think that...
All right, I'm sorry, sorry, hold on, hold on. I know we're having a great discussion, I'm having a hard time hearing, hearing Derek, so...
Our faith, like, how strong our faith is, like, it could be a good thing and also it could be a bad thing too, like, sometimes if people hear something or just how people interact, I mean, we have a lot of people who come here and we have a big clique of circles, but getting new people in, kind of getting growth at the same time, does that make sense?
Are you talking numbers-wise, maturity-wise?
Yeah, number-wise for, bringing in new people, followers, stuff like that.
Okay.
It's a good, it could be a good thing and a bad thing, like, trying to not be...
Like, reaching out to people, is that kind of weird?
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm hearing evangelism is witnessing is maybe a one talent, is a congregation. Yes, let's go, pray, pray to church, man. You don't want me doing it because I am the world's worst artist, so, okay. Anything else for one talent congregation as a one talent we see?
Volunteerism.
Volunteerism, okay?
Maybe, I don't know how to say it, no word in, like, we worry, I don't know, I'm gonna sound really mean.
Don't...
We worry, like, we're trying to like, get new members all the time, but then like, we don't worry about like our own members and like why they're not coming back, like, they've left or, I don't know how to say it, but you know what I mean, like...
Almost lumping us together.
Keeping, keeping our members coming to church.
Yeah.
Okay?
I don't know how to say it.
No, I understand.
Yeah, keeping, yeah.
Okay?
I don't think we're, I think we're one talent in terms of being vulnerable, you know, I mean, your sermon series is being real, I think, again, sometimes as Christians, and then maybe it's also just being in a real community, you know, just have our culture, you know, being able to be vulnerable, we, we all struggle, you know, and then, you know, if I open up... You know, being able to be vulnerable, we, we all struggle, you know, and, and then, you know, if I open up, you know, supported and encouraged in your faith. Those sorts of things, so.
Okay, so yeah, being vulnerable, opening up, sharing, uh, yeah, the rural community could be.
You know, just kind of going deeper.
Okay.
You, you know, um, deeper in our faith.
Okay.
Which obviously requires surrender and some of these things.
Sure, okay, so getting deeper, okay?
I think too, uh, people often have ideas and they would be good leaders, but they're afraid to lead for fear of criticism or judgment. So it's easier not to even try because they're scared of the reaction. And if you are a leader, you can just like guarantee that somebody won't like something.
Amen, babe, amen.
And we'll talk with other people about it rather than the person that's actually who, the one that's trying.
Sure. Alright, how about let's go up a little bit to the two talent congregation, in what ways and what things are we maybe a two talent? So we're not at the highest level of five, we're not at the lowest of one, we're a little bit more. Little more ability, a little more gifts that we see within our congregation. Anybody come up with anything for two, or we'll just skip and go to five if we didn't get anything for two?
You know, first you last.
Personal last, yeah.
I think in some ways musically, I think the need is a five, but the rest of us free in church.
Wow! You can slip him the twenty later. Go ahead, go ahead, bro, yeah. Sure.
There would not be much live music.
Yeah, again, that, that is a blessing, alright? Yeah, I, I, we are limited by that of live, live music so to speak, okay, we just don't. And it is, I mean, it's something that, you know, the elders and I have talked about, it, it's something we're continuing to wrestle with of what does the future look like? I mean, this is a reality, you're not gonna live forever, right?
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not, alright, okay. Um, and, you know, we know, you've, you've had, you know, your knee and everything, and you know, the, the, the body breaks down and, um. That's, that's an area where we, we have to, to be looking at, what does that look like, continue to look like in the future, okay? Obviously, we, we, right now, just other music areas for lack of numbers and other reasons, you know, um, not a choir currently. You know, we're, we're thankful to have the instrumentalists about once a month or so, which is a huge blessing, um, definitely. But, but yeah, music is an area for us to think and consider.
I, I don't know where this would go, but I, I feel like, um, you know, uh, there's, there's been a push to be in the Bible more, it's been awesome. You know, I don't know whether to add in that continuum obviously of the congregation, but you know, I know our culture, our world, Bible literacy is low. Um, you know, so I'm guessing we're probably not at five in ways to be able to do that, but you know, the, the progress that has been good is, um, so.
Okay, yeah, biblical literacy. Alright, how about let's go to five, alright, so, really a lot of things, you know, we see God doing in our congregation. Or we see how God's just giving us a bunch of resources with a five. School, okay?
I think this congregation comes, not been here a long time, there seems to be, I think there's a gift of service in this congregation, whether it's helping with the school or helping Care Warriors or trying to get the wall to fit, so I think there's a lot of people maybe not willing to take the lead, but are willing to serve in a lot of different areas.
Okay.
There's a gift in congregation.
Okay.
For not being a large group of people.
Sure, okay, so, so people serving, alright, um, yeah, maybe not leading, but hey, can you do this for me, you know? A willingness to serve. Other th- eh, ways or things we are a five talent congregation?
I think, uh, you know, the screen is that I think it's a blessing to, and just the way that that's used, I find some of those videos where it's hard.
Okay, so, technology. Okay?
I love the screen, I love being able to look up and see the words and sing praises and not have my head buried. Maybe the people in front of me don't appreciate that one. Him and all, trying to read the words.
Well, you're usually sitting upstairs, Pam, so you know, we're, we're getting to hear it, hear it all out everywhere. Just so bright, it's so bright in there. Yeah, I mean, I, I think we, we are blessed, obviously, we, we've got the screen, we've got the live stream, we've got the video, you know, capabilities. We've got the audio, I mean, you know, we have a wealth of, of people serving, you know, Steve and John and Ronald and people who do sound and people who do the, run the PowerPoint, um, we are blessed, Sharon, you know, run the PowerPoint and, and just, just many others, alright, um.
Well, there's something about walking up to communion, this is me personally.
Sure.
Seeing the words, especially if it's a contemporary song, Christian song, and singing along with the CD or whatever. That just, you know, while you're taking communion.
Sure.
Some songs just make it even more special to me.
Okay, anything else, things in which we're a five talent congregation?
I think having groups like the women Lutheran and little activities and stuff like that to bring people together.
Okay.
Like at the schools and all that too.
I think the men's Bible study group has been a blessing too. At least my husband.
I'm, I'm, I'm going with the assumption your husband is going home and telling you things, so.
And I, I think that's, that is great, I do, I do. There's something about a men's Bible study, a men's Bible study and a group Bible study.
I would, I would. I would really echo uh, that, I, I really, our, our men's, our, our men's group time is really, really great. Uh, we just have really good discussion, we have good support for each other, um, just good comments. Once in a while, we get off the rails a little bit, but you know.
But it's fun.
It's fun, there you go.
When we get off the rails, that's when it's interesting.
It, it, it can, it can a little bit. Yeah, I, I mean, it just, it really is, so, uh, guys, uh, those of you that are here that haven't been, uh, really encourage you again, fourth Monday of the month. We usually meet, um, we meet for an hour, it's just, uh, it really is an encouraging, I, I leave very encouraged, uh, each week. And, and I'm thankful because I really just kind of facilitate, um, and let the spirit go where he wants to go with us. But it is really, it's a huge, huge blessing each month, I'm, I'm really glad we, we've, uh, we started that, really.
I'm pretty happy with the conversations we have in that group and.
Yeah.
The different out, the outtakes of it, the videos too, very enlightening.
I would say too, just, you know, on behalf of the school, just all the support, just, you know, the people who volunteer and donate and, and, and just all, stuff just comes up all the time. And it's just, you can see the Holy Spirit at work and brilliant hearts, um, you know, it's, it's just amazing. So, so thank you, and I would also say, I would say, uh, we are blessed to have Pastor Ryan.
I, I appreciate that, um, well, to piggyback on that, I would say we have a five talent school staff, teachers, support staff. Absolutely, so let's praise God for our school. Hey, I get the joy and the privilege to sit with them every day in devotions and just, the maturity, the passion that our staff has. Number one for our Lord, but number two for our kids and families is just, it's incredible, we are so blessed. And we've had, and God has blessed us, you know, we've had some, especially this summer, we had some, some people kind of retire and, and step away from our support staff. And God has just brought new people in who've, who continue to be a blessing, and so, that's just, just an awesome thing. Alright, um, again, today we have, have looked at, again, for God's reason, for God's purpose, he limits, again, the resources he gives to a congregation. We're seeing kind of some of those things, and again, as we will head into the new year, strategic planning, remembering that because there are limited resources that God provides, it can cause conflict. But as we plan together, as we talk to each other, as we work towards consensus together, that conflict is limited. So we're rowing in the same direction, so we're going together again, looking and working together with the resources God has given to us. How do we want to use those things, how, what does that look like, okay? And again, knowing that there are some areas, we're gonna be a one talent congregation, that's not bad. It's just God has not chosen to bless us with maybe a lot of things in that area, okay? Some ways it's gonna be two, in some ways it's gonna be five. Again, in that story, we want to be faithful with whatever God has given to us, okay? I know at times I'm guilty of, God, I want everything to be a five talent, alright? And there are times, God, like, no, and that's alright. But it's just, again, navigating and being faithful what God has blessed us with for his glory, for his kingdom, so that other people know about Jesus. Alright, so very good, um, very good, um, discussion today, very good insight. Want to let you know just about, uh, the next few weeks, so, next Sunday, we have our quarterly voters meeting, so we will not have Bible class. The following week, I will not be here, so we will not have it, alright, so we'll pick back up three weeks from today with session number six, alright? So again, we will be like we've been doing, uh, continuing to email you, uh, the, the questions ahead of time for you to ponder and think about and consider. Yeah, Doug, check it out, you'll have a couple of weeks, you don't need to worry about it, alright? I wa- I was worried, you know, I, I saw it this morning and like, uh-oh.
I was like, oh no.
Yeah, there you go, alright, you're welcome. Lighting from the wedding yesterday, left that, that, left that one here, so, alright, um, so yeah, but again, above all, as we've kind of talked about in the previous weeks. Please can, continue to pray for this whole process, cause we talked about one of the first sessions, if these are not the Lord's plans, they're gonna fail and fall miserably. We want to be following the Lord's will, the Lord's plans, uh, as we go forward, strategic planning. But also really, as we talked about serving, as we talked about volunteering, I'm gonna invite all of you to really be praying about how you can be involved in this process going forward as we head into the workshop part, uh, in the new year. Uh, if God may be leading you to be on the core planning team, uh, the expanded planning team or just continually giving, uh, input and encouragement. Please be praying about that and where God may be leading you in this process, okay? Alright, let's close in prayer. Father God, we thank you so much for this time we've had together, and thank you for the discussion, and. Lord, I pray that you would help us all to have thankful and grateful hearts, Lord, you have given us wonderful resources here in our congregation of people, of, of other resources, and, Lord, you have limited those things so that we rely on you, so that we trust in you. That you would shine forth in and through us, and help us to do that, or help us not to be thinking we can do it in our own strength, in our own ways. But constantly looking to you, Jesus, the author and perfecter of our faith. Lord, continue to use us, you have blessed us, help us to be open to how you want to use us, our hands, our feet, our voices, our time, our talents, our treasures, our whole lives, Lord. May we truly be a living sacrifice before you, before others. Blessed this day and this week, may we continue to be about your work in the kingdom, we pray this in Jesus' name, amen, have a great week.